All right. Good evening. Welcome to tonight's meeting. My name is Paula Reap, Mayor of Kingborough. It's my pleasure to welcome you all to the meeting on Monday the 1st of September 2025. And welcome to our member of the public that we have with us this evening. Time being 5:30pm, I now officially declare this meeting open. Council now operates under the Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulations 2025. Under these, I'm required to advise you that an audio or audio visual recording is being made of the meeting. All persons attending the meeting are to be respectful of and consider it towards other persons at the meeting. And language and conduct at the meeting that could be perceived as offensive, defamatory, or threatening to a person attending the meeting or listening to the recording is not acceptable. The audio recording of council meetings is made publicly available on our website, and meetings are live streamed on YouTube. I'll now ask staff to confirm that the audio recording has started. Thank you. That's confirmed. I wish to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, pay respects to elders past and present, and acknowledge today's Tasmanian Aboriginal community. Our attendees this evening are myself, councillor Reap, Deputy Mayor councillor Gladewright, councillor Antoli, councillor Bain, councillor Cordova, councillor Dean, councillor Fox, councillor Richardson, and councillor Street. From our staff this evening, we have the CEO, Mr Stewart, Director of Governance, Recreation and Property Services, Mr Sme, Director of Engineering Services, Mr Mackey, Director of Environment Development and Community Services, Ms Shakuti, our Manager of Digital Experience, Mr Tanaglia, our Communications Lead, Ms Adams, and our Executive Assistant, Mrs Morton. We have apologies this evening from councillor Midgley. We're now on page one, confirmation of minutes. The minutes of the open session of council meeting number 14, held on the 18th of August 2025, be confirmed as a true record. Looking for a mover and a seconder, please? Got a mover in councillor Bain and a seconder in the deputy mayor. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against, motion is carried unanimously. Page two, workshops held since the last council meeting. We had a workshop last Monday, the 25th of August, on the strategic plan. Does any councillor or anybody else, any staff member, have an interest they would like to declare? The CEO.
Through you, mayor. I declare an interest in one of the items in closed session tonight, and I'll leave the room.
Thank you. Still on page two, transfer of agenda items. Is there any...
Sorry, mayor.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Green light I'm looking for.
Green light.
Yeah, green light. Sorry.
I have an interest to declare in a closed session item, and I will be leaving the room.
Thank you. Any further ones? Thank you. Still on page two, questions without notice from the public. Does our member of the public who's here tonight wish to ask a question?
No.
No? Thank you. Just before we go to questions on notice from the public, I wanted to make a statement which is in relation to correct an item on the agenda, on agenda number 13 from the 4th of August 2025. A question on notice was asked by Ms Jo Landon regarding LPS representations and the application of the Landscape Conservation Zone, or LCZ as it's known. In response, council staff made the statement, and I quote, noting that there were two representations received that opposed application on any site proposed to be LCZ, regardless of whether they knew or informed these occupiers or owners, unquote. This statement, recorded in both the agenda and the minutes, inaccurately represented the nature and scope of the referenced submissions. Council wishes to formally retract this statement. One of the referenced representations addressed a broad range of zoning outcomes and included support for certain LCZ applications, and council apologises for this error. Takes us to page two, questions on notice from the public. And if anybody who is watching this would like to submit a question on notice, you can do so by completing the relevant form on the website or by emailing casey@kingborough.taz.gov.au. Questions on notice, the first one was from Ms Landon in relation to the local provisions schedule with an officer's response from Mr Standar. Next one from Ms Presnell in relation to bushfire preparedness and Free Green Waste Month with a response from Mr Mackey. And the next one from Ms Knight with an officer's response from Mr Standar in relation to the section 35F report. We're now on page four, and the next one was from Mr Biggins with a response from Ms Shakuti in relation to public land reserves. And the final one was from Ms Hanley with a response from Ms Shakuti in relation to the Landscape Conservation Zone. We are now at page five, questions without notice and councillors. Does any councillor wish to ask a question without notice? Councillor Cordova.
Thank you, mayor. I've got a few today, so my apologies in advance. The first chunk is about traffic management in general and roads. And some of this is as a result of what was a terrific meeting yesterday with the Lesley Vale Community Association. But firstly, a question around traffic congestion at the Algonha Road Mitre Ten channel highway roundabout. What are the plans for dealing with the ongoing traffic congestion, particularly in the southbound lane? And what advocacy are we doing with the state government to try and improve outcomes at that particular location?
Mr Mackey. No, not Mr Mackey. No. The CEO.
Through you, mayor. There might be some of that that we need to take on notice, but there is a state government project to address some of the traffic around that roundabout, including the duplication of the channel highway there. That is intended to address some of the traffic issues that flow through that roundabout. So I'd need to come back to you on the current state of that project, but there is state government plans to address some of the congestion around that roundabout.
Councillor Cordova.
Thank you, mayor. And so some of that issue there is to do with cars being... Cars have been diverting allegedly into the Antarctic Division to avoid the congestion, which could present a safety hazard. And then the next question I have regards the... It regards footpaths in general, but particularly a notorious section along Wells Parade from View Street to Hazel Street. In this particular instance, the camber of the footpath is allegedly quite dangerous because of how steep it is. My general question there, and so one of the issues is that, you know, people with prams and things like that, they could actually tip over. Do we have general benchmarks for the maximum limitations of what that gradient can be on footpaths? And is council aware of this particular location and getting a fix on that?
Mr Mackey.
Through you, mayor. Not with a way of that particular location. Can I say it again? Which particular streets?
Yes, through you, mayor. The area we're talking about, and I'll provide a Google street view of it, is Wells Parade, Blackmans Bay, from View Street to Hazel Street. So it's quite a steep bit of road. And it just so happens that the footpath there is kind of on this strong gradient. So people with prams and things have a bit of trouble with that. My next question... Oh, yeah. Thank you for looking into that for us. Next question relates to constituent concern around Auburn Road in Kingston. I'm aware that this is kind of something that's come up a lot. I am unfamiliar with the current plans, considering our budget situation. I'm unaware of our current plans around upgrading Auburn Road to deal with the safety concerns around that particular area. Are there council updates that can be provided?
Mr Mackey.
Through you, mayor. Yeah, good question. I've been made aware that we do have preliminary designs.
...but also asked for a review of that project, given the preliminary costs that have come in. There's talk of doing widening as part of that upgrade, but I'm concerned that... But I'm going to update you.
Thank you. Through you, mayor. Nearly done. This one relates to Lesley Road. Is the council aware of the Lesley Road needing additional sealing or repair? The particular areas which I can provide, they relate to the quality of road. Apparently, apparently there was some money budgeted in a previous year's budget that was never actually spent on Lesley Road. And so there was a bit of community concern raised around that, hoping that that money for upgrades on Lesley Road could be reinstated in upcoming budgets. Is there any update around Lesley Road in particular?
Mr Mackey.
Through you, mayor. Again, if my tenure here and not across previous budget analysis of the road, I can take that notice and provide you that.
Thank you. And through you, mayor, just, I guess, passing along some feedback around trees on road verges causing some sightline issues. When it comes to state growth roads, my understanding, but I would like to be corrected if I'm wrong, my understanding is that it's the Department of State Growth's responsibility to clear road verges of sightline issues. I'm thinking particularly around the Lesley Vale turnoff onto the channel highway.
Mr Mackey. Onto the Huon Highway?
Huon Highway is what I mean. Sorry about that.
Mr Mackey.
Through you, mayor. So what was the action...
Oh, is it state growth's responsibility to deal with, if there's trees and vegetation that's causing sightline disruption? If it's not a council... Obviously, council's responsible for our own road verges, but we're not responsible for clearing sightline issues on state growth roads, are we?
Yeah, through you, mayor. That's correct. If it's on a state road, it would be state's accountability.
Great. Thank you.
So, sorry. We're just having some teething issues with our system that isn't fully integrated. So it is possible that Mr Mackey isn't being heard. So just to repeat that, I can't remember all the other ones, but I think he's taking them on notice. But that last one is that it is the state government responsibility to maintain the road verge. And just in relation to that issue of the Lesley Road Huon Highway intersection, this was raised with me... It's been raised many, many times. And of course, there was a study that did recommend as a priority that that intersection be made more safe by the state government. They're yet to do that. I have requested a meeting today on site to go and look at that intersection with the Minister for Infrastructure, Mr Vincent. And I'll be inviting the president of the Lesley Vale Community Group along to that. So hopefully, I think the best thing would be to get the minister there. And I know Minister Vincent's very hands-on and likes to see things, so we'll go and show him some of the issues with that intersection.
Great. Thank you, mayor. And I think that's a very good indication about council's role, where we can't actually personally fix a problem. We can always advocate. So I think that's really good to hear that we're playing that advocacy role. Here's a general question about rubbish collection in areas like Lesley Vale that aren't currently receiving rubbish collection. My understanding is it's always... Some people want it, some people don't want it, and it's a matter of communication and engagement with the community. Please may I be updated on, I guess, in general terms? Because, you know, I don't want to speak on behalf of the Lesley Vale Community Association with respect to what rubbish collection they do or don't want. But in general terms, how do we, as a council, go about engaging with communities to really get a sense of whether or not they want these things that do cost money implemented? Because obviously, some residents want to pay the money to get the service, and others would prefer to just leave things the way they are. How do we find that balance or tease that out?
Look, I'm going to have a stab at this and hope then that Mr Mackey nods in agreement with what I say, because otherwise you might not be able to hear him. But it's my understanding where we've had these requests from residents in areas that aren't covered by the weekly collections, that there is a survey that goes out. So we've had that in parts of Margate and other areas where... So there's a survey that goes directly out to residents, and then we base the decision on whether it's extended to, you know, what the survey tells us. And surprisingly, there is very mixed views from members of the community. Some, as you said, don't want the rubbish collection. And so there have been areas where we've been surprised that it hasn't come out in favour, where we've got, you know, sometimes had hundreds of responses. So I'm assuming that's still the process. Yep, yep, there's nodding over there.
Great. Thank you. Nearly there. And thank you once again, mayor, for your indulgence. This question is around a predetermination mediation policy. It's a bit of a mouthful, but on the 18th of August this year, the... It's a bit of a mouthful, but on the 18th of August this year, the Central Coast Council adopted a land use planning predetermination mediation policy, which provides a process where applicants and representatives can meet with council staff and try to negotiate a win-win outcome. According to the policy purpose, so this is just a quote lifted straight from Central Coast Council's policy, quote, "This policy establishes a structured and consistent approach to conducting predetermination mediation when an application has received one or more representations during the public notification period," end quote. In the preamble, it talks about that the objective of that particular policy is to, and this is a quote, "to explore mutually acceptable resolutions that balance the diverse interests of stakeholders, including applicants, developers, community members, planning authorities and other entities," end quote. Bit of a long preamble, but the question is really, is Kingborough Council considering adopting a similar policy to formalise what I believe is, is something that we're already kind of doing, which is, you know, talking with both proponents, but also getting a sense of what the community feels like before things actually come through the, the formal statutory process?
Yep, Ms Shakuti.
Through you, Mayor. Sounds like an interesting and beneficial policy. We do do that, I suppose, informally right through the assessment process. So we're often liaising with community members even before advertising and of course the applicant. If there can be some obvious resolutions to representations received before a decision is required, and if it's going to come to the council as the planning authority, we will do that. But I will certainly go and have a look at that policy that you refer to. Perhaps a similar model could be beneficial and provide some clarity to all parties in the process around how we, we might treat that through the process and rather leaving it to the end and maybe reducing appeals or the likelihood of appeals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Cordova, is it?
That's all for me, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? No, we'll keep moving. There was one question on notice and councillors from Councillor Cordova in relation to the planning application determinations with a response from Ms Tyler Moore. We're now on page six, petitions, there are no petitions still being actioned. And at the time the agenda was compiled, no petitions had been received. Takes us to page seven, officers' reports to councils, Glen Sin units on Bruny Island with a recommendation on page nine, and I'm looking for a mover and a second, please. Move Deputy Mayor and a second on Councillor Bain, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So the purpose of this report is to discuss future options for the Glen Sin units, which are one-bedroom units located on Bruny Island. There are a couple of options, being sale, intensification of use, refurbishment and renovation or alternative management. I note here that the officers recommend that the first step should be to further investigate alternative management. And if there's no appetite for that, then refurbishment and renovation would be considered. But because there's no budget allocation for renovation and refurbishment, that becomes a little bit tricky. But my question is, if we do explore the alternative management approach, and I note some of the stakeholders, Homes Tasmania, and Mission Australia, would they not require a renovation or refurbishment anyway?
Mr Smee, and hopefully that can be heard.
Through you, Mayor, they might require it, but the basis on which we would be making the units available, regardless of what that model is, is basically what you see is what you get at the moment. You know, it, it may be we get to the point where a refurb is required as part of a future management model, but at this point in time, it'd be too early to say if that's going to be a definitive requirement or not.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So the recommendation is just, like, we're not deciding tonight, it's just that the council officers explore the alternative management approach. So I think that's sensible and I'm happy to support that one. Looking forward to seeing the report when it comes back.
Thank you. Councillor Antoli.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question as, around the, the fact that one of the units is empty and it's triggered this discussion. The first question is, do we know why the unit is empty? Is it not able to be used or is there another reason?
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor, the unit's empty because the previous tenant departed. And we haven't filled it because this has created an opportunity for a hold point in which we consider our options. If we're going to do a refurb of the units, it's really advantageous to have one of them vacant because we can then rotate the other three through whilst we do that renovation. And that's the reason we haven't looked to fill it. But also because, as I say, it has created a situation in which we wanted to look at our options and potentially look at a different management model.
Councillor Antoli.
Thank you, Mayor. So my understanding is there is actually a bit of a waiting list, is, is that correct?
Through you, Mayor, absolutely. There is a very high level of interest in becoming a tenant in these units and council has a waiting list.
If I may, Mayor, my follow-up then is if, if there is a waiting list and people are in need of housing, is there a way that we can at least fill it and continue these discussions without holding them off?
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor, we can of course fill it. The, the unit does need work and as has previously been pointed out, we haven't any funding allocation in this year's budget to do that work. So there is a question as to whether filling the unit is the appropriate thing to do if it's not meeting current building standards. I would suggest that if we're going to fill it, then council would need to make a decision to make an allocation of funds to do the upgrade before we do so.
And do we have an idea what allocation of funds might be needed to make this unit livable or up to standard? Because I think if you were to ask a person who was homeless whether they wanted something that was substandard versus being homeless or sleeping rough, they might choose the sub.
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor, I appreciate that position, but council as a landlord is required to meet certain standards in relation to building codes. We couldn't let a premises that doesn't meet current standards. And my understanding is we're looking at somewhere between 50,000 and 100,000 to do the upgrade.
Can I ask, do we know that this particular unit breaks code if someone was to move in? Or is it just not that nice? Does it actually break code?
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor, it doesn't meet current standards.
All right.
Councillor Antoli.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I definitely think we need to do something. I understand that there's a waiting list of some five people and someone close to the situation told me that one of them's living in a quote, unquote, hovel at the moment. I would like to explore bringing, spending the minimum amount of money required to bring it up to code. I'm sure they don't need a full five-star kitchen for that to happen. I'd love to be able to explore what that would take and I'd love to be able to offer that person the accommodation as quickly as possible while we work out what to do with the place. And I'd like to explore that through the discussion with my colleagues here present.
Mr Smee. No, no, that look says no. Okay, Councillor Fox.
I guess I'm, I'm very concerned about this issue and like Councillor Antoli, I realise that, that this is a very old development, which was probably, it was built by the Bruny Island Council when they were a council. And I'm disappointed that there hasn't been any money in the budget for all those years to upgrade and keep them up to standard. And they've generally been occupied by locals. It's such a benefit to council to have these units under council control and to be able to offer this facility to the local residents because it's close to medical facilities, it's close to the library, it's close to the community hall, it's close to the school where they can regularly see their grandchildren coming and going. There are sporting events they can attend. It would be an absolute terrible thing if this was to be closed down because we can't afford to keep it. And I, I worry that if we go to external stakeholders, that the, the scale of the amount of units needed isn't going to be justified to a, a person who's looking to make a profit. It's council land which is valuable and it's a valuable community service that was obviously highlighted by the islanders as being a way of keeping their aging community within reach of the community and their families. I think is anything we could do to, to breach this current situation where we might be failing the regulations would be better than going to external providers. I think there isn't enough information in this document to, to make me feel that there is justification to going to external providers. I'd like to hear how other councillors feel, but I do feel quite emotional about this issue. And I would like to see us resolve it as a council rather than going outside council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Fox. Councillor Bain.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. First one, is my understanding correct that this, if we approve this tonight, it just means that officers come back with a recommendation, with an options paper?
That's correct.
Correct.
Yep, there's certainly no, yeah, thank you for pointing that out. There's certainly no decision being made tonight. It's just authorising the staff to go and get a full picture of what the possibilities are moving forward. So it might be that once we've got that information that we go, no, we can't, we don't want to do that, that's not going to work. So it's really an information gathering process, but in the interests of transparency, we thought it appropriate to bring it here for councillors to be aware that this was going on.
Great, thank you. My second question was, do we have an idea of what the revenue versus expenditure currently is on four units?
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor, we receive approximately $15,000 per annum from rental and we spend about the same. That's operational spend, not capital, obviously.
Councillor Bain.
Thank you. And just a final question, in regards to where we talk about the alternative management approach, is it a case of council officers will be looking at all options, including, say, if Homes Tasmania were looking at purchasing the units outright, would that also be on the table as a potential option?
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor, yes, we think that a, a broad and open process in which we, we look at all the potential options that might be out there would be beneficial. There's been instances over the years where we've had interest from other providers in developing additional units on the site and there is land available to do that, which could actually add to the number of units there, which would be a good thing for the community. So, so yes, we're very open-minded as to what the potential could be. But as indicated by the mayor, the, the intent would be to gather that information and come back to council with a, a list of potential options, having been fully explored in more detail.
Councillor Bain.
Thank you, Mayor. Based on that answer, I'm certainly supportive of the recommendation and look forward to seeing the options.
Thank you. Councillor Dean.
Thanks, Mayor, just the one question echo, I understand what, what people say in terms of the potential of having someone move in there in the, in the short term. Just a quick question, have we got a rough timeframe? Are we talking, you know, six weeks? Are we talking six months in terms of getting an options paper back to us for consideration?
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor. Obviously, we're going to need to allow some time for prospective providers to do an assessment and get an expression of interest into us. So I would, I would estimate we are looking a two to three month time period.
Two to three month time period to allow external providers to make all their assessments. Councillor Dean.
Yeah, look, just to say I'm supportive of it, I'd obviously just be a bit loathe if that two to three months was to stretch out to six or eight and we're sitting on an empty unit. So, but otherwise I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Any further contributions? Councillor Cordova.
Thank you, Mayor. It's, oh, look, I, I really validate a lot of what Councillor Fox said about the, the critical role that council does play in this space. I, I personally believe we should play much more of a role. The other part of this conversation to be had is that, you know, in, in deliberations around what council's future strategic plan should look like, everybody knows that it's a key theme that we keep talking about throughout the municipality is housing availability. There's obviously a, a supply shortage and many other issues related to that. So this is a space in which council does play a role. I think the, the question then becomes, does council play this advocacy role or do we play the active participant role? And that's something that I would encourage the community, when they do get the opportunity to have their say around strategic planning for Kingborough in general, I encourage the community to have their say. And if they think that council should play a really active role in, you know, owning houses and renting out houses and, and providing houses for vulnerable members of our community, then I strongly encourage our community members to, to say that when they get the opportunity. That's, that's kind of how I feel, is that council can and should play a really active role in not just advocating for housing, but actually providing it, rather than leaving it up to other people. Having said all that, if we are to play this advocacy role, then the fact remains that right now we only have these four units and I think there should be more. And I'm, I'm looking on Listmap right now and can see that there's available land there to get more. And there are specialist, specialist housing providers in Tasmania, whether it's Shelter Taz or Housing Connect or, or the other service agencies out there that are specialists in this area. And therefore, I presume they could do this better than we are doing it if we just have these four isolated units. So the, these are the two issues that I'm weighing up. Do we play that role of hands-on, get involved, which I think we personally should? Or do we go with what I think the status quo is, which is in general, we're more of an advocate that helps connect service agencies and the state government to get the job done at a scale and at a level of efficiency that council can't provide? And so I, I, I'm sure that this will be detailed in the report that we'll receive, but I'm trying to explain that the reason why I will support this report as written is because those are the kind of issues that I, I would like elucidated by people who are smarter than me. And I also think that when it does come time for this council to make a decision about whether we start being more hands-off and playing more of an advocacy role rather than a service delivery role, I think that's where the community really needs to guide us as representatives. The community needs to tell us what we should be doing. And so I encourage the community to get involved in that conversation as well. So I'm, I'm pleased to support this and I, I just really emphasise the, the critical, the, the critical need for housing availability and affordability in this municipality. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Cordova. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Antoli.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think we've solved the issue that the fact the unit is empty, which I find unacceptable, and that there's a discussion that there's no money to get it to standard to fill it. So while it's in our control, I think that's the first thing that should actually be happening. It's, we have a duty of care to the community to make sure if we've got four units that we give to people who are in distress or at risk, that we keep our side of the bargain and do the minimum required to get that unit up to code as quickly as possible and filled because there are five people, one of which I've been told lives in a hovel, I don't know what that means, get them in. So what assurance can I get from council officers or from the executive leadership team that will do that while we deliberate over a report, which is all good and well, but it doesn't put food on the table, if you know what I'm trying to say, for these five people?
Mr Smee, can you provide us with some assistance in relation to, you mentioned that it wasn't up to standard? Is that, what is the, can, can you describe for us, you know, what the situation with the unit is? Is it unsafe? Is, are there broken things? Is it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be interested in exploring that if you could, please.
Yes, Mayor, the, the unit does not meet disability access standards. The, the bathroom doesn't meet current code. There are elements of the kitchen that are falling apart. There's a mix of not meeting standard and elements of the facility that are in desperate need of an upgrade. So it's not, it's not entirely a case of not meeting standard, but there are elements where it clearly doesn't.
So does that mean that the other units also would not meet, would not have disability access? Because as Chair of the Access Committee, I would find that alarming that we own four units that potentially, that are designed to house elderly residents and they're not properly, fully accessible, probably because that wasn't the standard at the time?
Mayor, you are correct. Bearing in mind, at least one of the units has undergone a renovation in recent years. The units were built to the standards at the time and it's only when you get to the point where you need to consider an upgrade that the standards does come into play. And that's at the point where now where we have a vacant unit that is in need of work. And when we look at the work that needs to be done, it does invoke the current standards.
Councillor Antoli.
Thank you, Mayor. As a person that's actually run residential services to at-risk communities that were owned by the state, one of which the organisation I used to be in charge of still owns, it was, it's still not up to code and the state government was unwilling to spend the money to bring it up to code. But it's still being used to house individuals. So it doesn't seem to be stopping the state government. So what is stopping us from at least getting it up to scratch to fill it while we work it out? Well, we're not asking for an upgrade, we're just asking for it to. I don't think anyone's going to take us to court if we actually spent a bit of money to upgrade a building, to put a homeless person in while we work out what to do with the property. Let's not allow bureaucracy to get in the way of a practical solution.
No, but we've also got to ensure, we do have to ensure their safety. So if that person does have mobility issues and it's not accessible, they're not going to be able to get up and down from the toilet or get in and out of the unit, which could cause them some harm. So we do need to.
And what if they don't have mobility issues? There's five people on the list, surely someone would be willing to take it. They're paying less than commercial rent. I don't believe, I do believe there are exemptions in the Rental Act for situations like this. And I really don't see anyone taking us to court over something like that while we work it out.
Mr. Stuart, can you assist us with this?
Through you, Mayor. It seems as if we need to have a closer look at the various options we have in regard to bringing the facility up to safe and sanitary standards alongside, you know, what meeting code looks like. So it looks like we need to do a little bit more work on that. I guess my view is that there's probably, these things can happen in parallel. So we can be looking at what those options look like from a capital perspective whilst we potentially undertake work to consider what the best model is for the future for these facilities. I guess it is worth noting that this would be unplanned expenditure if we were to undertake anything in this year. So we need to be cognisant of any impacts that that has on overall operating budgets and capital budgets for this year. But we can do that further investigation in parallel. And I guess if the council was to look at the recommendation, you could consider, say that officers investigate options for tenancying the unit in the short term. But I do note that that could come with financial implications as the team have already articulated. You know, $50,000 plus, up to $100,000, I'm sure, at the top end of the equation. So it is worth noting that that's a not insignificant sizable investment.
If I may, Mayor, thank you, our CEO, for that assurance. I'd like to actually move that, if I may, Mayor, a motion to make that amendment. If you would permit that with a seconda, that we would actually look at that. And $50,000 to $100,000 is a lot of money. But to get someone off the street with a duty of care, we have a contract with our community that we're offering four homes on Bruny Island to people that are at risk, one of which is not being refurbished. We have, we expend money left, right and centre. We want to be careful how we expend money. But I think I'd like to have it justified that we need to spend that much money. But at the same time, if you were to ask me to vote $50,000 on a $54 million budget to get a person off the street for a property that we currently own, I'd vote for it. So, and I think there'd be plenty of individuals who are watching us tonight from Bruny Island and otherwise that would be happy to vote for it while we work out what to do with what is potentially a multimillion-dollar property. It is a large piece of land in prime sight. But at the same time, I'd like us to not be bureaucratic and discuss what to do with it without some sort of sense of assurance from the leadership team that we will pull our finger out and bring it up to code or do something to put a tenant in so that we are not leaving them homeless. That's what I'd like to move towards.
So you foreshadowed a motion then. Could you just articulate what that motion is? So I can see if there's a seconda and we can.
Basically, to paraphrase what the CEO just said, that we would work towards making that missing, that empty unit tenable while we work out the future of the site.
That's not exactly what I heard, but CEO.
Through you, Mayor. What I tried to say was a additional context on the motion could be to, for staff to explore the costs and therefore putting someone into that unit, rather than saying that we would. So I just see a bit of a difference because I think if it reaches a certain quantum of investment, then we might need to look at alternative options. And if we've got a resolution saying we will do that, we just need to be cautious about unintended consequences here. So I would be comfortable with a motion that stated that staff exploring tenancying the unit in the short term.
Yeah, fine.
Okay, so Mrs. Morton is just, is just putting an amendment in and let's just wait for her to catch up. Council offices explore tenancying the unit in the short term. Okay, so it's adding the words that council officers explore tenancying the unit in the short term as well as an alternative management, blah, 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 blah. I feel like it might need some other words in there, provided it is safe to do so or something to that effect.
Is that implicit? I don't think anyone here is going, is wanting to do anything unsafe and no one's empowering the council, go ahead and do anything unsafe.
CEO, you happy with the words as is? And then I'll ask the mover and seconda if it's acceptable.
I wonder whether we should make these an A and a B.
I can't hear you. I really can't hear you.
Sorry, I was suggesting whether or not we make these, this a motion in two parts, so an A and a B.
Okay.
And that council offices explore tenancying the unit in the short term, including considering budgetary implications.
And safety issues.
And safety issues, yep. And then part B, Adam, yep, explore.
Okay, so that is the revised motion. So the motion now reads that council officers, A, explore tenancying the unit in the short term, including considering budgetary implications and safety issues. And B, explore an alternative management approach for the Glensin units by engaging with relevant external stakeholders and return a report to council for consideration. And CEO.
Mayor, just, we've just discussed it and think adding the word vacant in front of unit would help for clarity.
Yep. Now the mover, the deputy mayor and councillor Bain were the mover and seconda. Deputy mayor, are you happy with those words? Could you just say that verbally, please?
Yes, I'm happy with those words.
Councillor Bain, are you happy with that amendment?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yep.
Just in terms of the budgetary implications, are we saying that if it goes above a certain amount, a decision will come back to council or?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. So under delegations, if it's a certain amount. Yeah, if it's over 100,000, it has to come back to council because it's outside my delegation for a new expenditure area. Look, we will use judgment in this to determine whether or not we think below that threshold, whether or not we should come back to council, acknowledging the timing elements that go alongside these things. You know, to get a report on a council agenda, these things take some time. So we would use some judgment in that.
Councillor Bain, are you happy then?
Happy, yeah.
Okay, so the mover and seconda are happy with that amendment, so that becomes the substantive motion. Councillor Fox, back on the substantive motion. You have already spoken because now this is the substantive motion again, so it would have to be a question.
I haven't spoken to the amendment.
No, because it's, the amendment is a substantive motion.
I do have a question. Is council aware that there, whether there are grants available to allow people to stay in their homes longer if they become disabled or if they are seriously ill, in order to provide ramps or handrails or facilities that allow them to continue to live in a dwelling like this?
So there are a range of programmes like that, but they're based on the individual. And so it's modifications to their own homes through their aged care packages that enable them to stay at home and that have been managed by providers for them. So it wouldn't be applicable in this case because they're not the owners of the properties.
Are we sure that they're not applicable? Because they might be applicable to rental properties.
Not as far as I'm aware, but I'm sure our staff could explore those opportunities.
Could our staff explore that, please?
Yep, the CEO is nodding in confirmation.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Otherwise I will ask the deputy mayor, would you like to sum up?
I think the, I think the amendment sort of goes back to the question that I had originally, was that if we're exploring alternative management approaches, that we would need to refurbish it anyway. So I'm really happy that we've come to this.
Thank you. I'm going to put the motion, it's as printed on the screen. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried unanimously. That takes us on to the appendices on page 10 with a recommendation on the same page. I'm looking for a mover and a seconda, please. Mover in councillor Dean and a seconda in councillor Bain. Are there any questions on the appendices? Councillor Bain.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple of quick ones. Meeting on the 4th of August, we're the representative of Housing Choices Tasmania.
CEO.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. So that was the mayor that the mayor and I, sorry, a meeting that the mayor and I had with Housing Choices Tasmania. So they're a housing provider that works across Australia, actually, this is the Tasmanian branch. And they were interested in how they could work with Kimber Council to potentially develop within our community. So, yeah, really positive meeting, early stage meeting around potential development that we could look at together. So it's great to be having these conversations with people that, you know, coming back to the previous conversation, can help address some of the housing issues within our community and avail themselves of external grants in order to help achieve the outcome.
Any further question? Councillor Bain.
I think just, and the one on 30th of July with Scott Spanton, was it just an update on the current development or anything further?
CEO.
Yeah, so that was a meeting of the development of the Spring Farm Village Shopping Centre. Just a real update, he was in town and providing me an update on the development there, how they're going in terms of the build and the tenancies that they have in place there. I guess in good news, they've got medical services going in, dentists, those types of things. So really quite positive about the leasing progression that they have in that facility.
Thank you. Councillor Antoli.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is regarding 14th of August, attended the SETN board meeting. Please forgive my ignorance, I don't know who that is. Is that the sports broadcaster?
No, no, that's SEN Tasmania.
Apologies. So that's the Southern Employment and Training Network. So that's a, an authority that helps, I guess, provide opportunities for people to get into employment, working with both the employees and the employer.
Fantastic, thank you.
Anything further on the appendices? No, I'm going to put the motion then. It's moved by councillor Dean and seconded by councillor Bain. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Notices of motion, there are no notices of motion. It takes us to confirmation of items to be dealt with in closed session. In accordance with Regulation 17 of the Local Government Meeting Procedures, Regulations 2025, council by absolute majority move into closed session to consider the following items. Confirmation of minutes, applications for leave of absence, PC hardware replacement, AB 2505 provision of roadside slashing and spraying services and the CEO's annual performance review. I'm looking for a mover and a seconda, please. Got a mover in councillor Cordova and a seconda in councillor Fox. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried unanimously. In accordance with the Kimber Council's Meetings Audio Recording Guidelines Policy, recording of the open session of the meeting will now cease. So thank you very much. Oh, a member of the community has left us, but to those who have been watching along at home, I apologise if we've had any issues with our not-quite-finally-installed microphones. Hopefully the audio was clear enough, but we will have that sorted out very shortly. So thank you for watching. Open session of council now adjourns at 6:20pm. Good evening.